Thank you. I don't want to tell them not to.
I'm okay.
Just gonna let it lay. See how it plays.
All right, good evening. This is the February 25th, 2010, Ryan Beck Town Board meeting, and we'll start with the pledge with Lily Knapp from Girl Scout Junior, Girl Scout Troop 10078.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Indivisible.
It is girl scout cookie season, so everybody's Lily's made about $500 here so far tonight, so if anybody wants to sign up, are you leaving? Somebody wants the black cookies, get her before she leaves.
What percentage does the town get of the proceeds?
There's a cookie fee.
For announcements, March 1st will be the deadline to apply for property tax exemptions. They all must be received by the in cesser's office by March 1st. You can call the town in cesser's office at 876-4805, March 1st, and that's, that applies towards next year's, so don't expect your taxes. On March 25th, Town Board meeting will be canceled in observance of Passover, so the second meeting for March, we will not have one in observance of Passover. There are some positions available for summer camp counselors, direct camp, if you're available candidates can, who are 16 years or older, you can apply, you can download the application that's available, you can call 876-3409, anybody interested. On March 23rd will be the town Easter egg hunt, that'll be starting at 10:00 AM sharp, that's Saturday, March 23rd, at the rec park down by the pool. Bring your own basket. I heard there are reports that the Easter Bunny will there. There are over 2,000 eggs, so anyways, bring your stuff. That's for girls. Bob. Okay, so, okay. Anybody have any announcements? All right. So February 11th, regular meeting, a motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. We have two presentations tonight. One is from the Cemetery Committee Chair Suzanne Kelly, and it's a follow-up from the last meeting, rest of the natural burial site.
Yep. So fellow committee member Dave Queen looked at all of these, and he said they're all great, so we'll just go with the lowest one.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's okay.
That was for the monuments to purchase, the markings of the natural burial sites for.
And is the top one the lowest?
It is.
So who is that?
Widener, Weedner, Widener.
In Highland.
It's 4,420, 4,420, so I'll motion to approve that.
I think we have it.
Already.
I think we did, yeah.
Yeah. That'll be item nine for business.
Well, no, you didn't, did you approve it?
No, but we do have it for approval, item nine.
Oh, it's under business. Okay, so we'll do it later.
Okay, great.
Got it.
Okay.
Do you need this now?
No.
Okay. Do you have this, John, in the?
No, I'll need that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I can copy it.
So should we take item nine and just approve it now?
We did approve it.
No, we didn't approve it.
No, it's not. It's on the agenda.
You want to just do it now, John?
I'm okay with that. I'm fine with that.
So we'll just approve it now, a motion and second to approve. Who is that again, John?
Item nine, the granite.
Yeah, but the name.
Widener Memorial.
Widener Memorial for.
Table 11.
4,420.
So Gina made a motion, and I'll second it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So move. Okay. And that's it from the Cemetery Committee, right? Okay, great, thanks. The second item for presentations tonight is for the Thompson Mazzarella Park Committee presentation, and Bruce, you want to open it up?
Rich Mattson, Weston Sampson.
I just need John to mic us off.
Just hand this out, and then I'll get right over there. Just the ideas for the update on where things are, what's been happening.
Great, thanks, Richard.
Rich Mattson, Mattson, Rich Mattson.
Again, it's Rich Mattson, Weston Sampson, working with the park committee, and the idea is tonight is to get a, give an update on what's been happening, and some of the things have been selected regarding signs, pervious pavement, and other features of the park. I don't know, is this close enough for people to see, or?
That's good.
One of the initial things we want to talk about is the entrance sign. There's, in your packet there, on the front entrance, the entrance is going to be moved a little bit to the east from the existing library entrance, and with that, there's going to be two stone walls curved for the entrance, and the sign that you see here is going to be backlit as part of the new entrance.
Do we have this page? I'm sorry.
Our, it's the front, this is the.
The covers.
The initial page is the, begins, it's showing you the sign and the lettering, and the general configuration of the wall that's going to be put up in, as well as the new sign is going to be backlit.
So where's the current driveway in?
Current driveway is right here.
Okay, so it's going to be shipped over.
Correct. And then, since the last time, we've, we've changed the entrance to the library to be directly across from the future parking and entrance to the community center, that could just be as proposed at some point in future.
Could I just go back to this, could I just go back to the sign for a minute?
Absolutely.
Does this fit within our sign permit size of sign? Have you looked at our regulations on?
Sign is regulated under the village.
What?
Sign is under the village.
Sign is under the village regulation, not under the town regulation. That piece of property with a stone wall is, is in the village.
Here, just for reference, this is the village and line, and the power lines on this slide.
So this is bigger than what we would allow?
It's, it may be a little bit bigger. We have talked with the village, and we've already talked with the village planning board on. One of the features that they, they wanted to see, if there was going to be lighting, they wanted the sign to be backlit. Originally posed some lighting up to the sign, but.
So this would be lights at night?
It'll be backlit behind it, and, you know, the final configuration of that hasn't been finalized, but there's going to be electrical power brought over there, just, that's the final feature that's going to be reviewed.
My own view as to why we should light up something at night, we've got no light pollution in this world, do another lit sign.
This is very soft lighting. The idea was not to have anything that would shoot up to the sign, but something behind the sign, if there, you know, the library is very busy at, you know, very early in the winter, it gets dark, an opportunity just to have some light that's sure entering the park and library, in the future, the community center.
I would think people know where the library is, they're going to know where this is, but, look, I don't want to interfere with your plans, I.
Well, it's very easy to put a timer on.
I was kind of wondering that too, Wayne.
Everywhere. I mean, so you put a timer on, it goes off at an appropriate timeframe, and comes back on at an appropriate timeframe. It's a typical process.
Because we do have the Stargazer group, which I'm hoping they'll be able to utilize that park as well, and I know that's where their big issue is, is unnecessary lights after dark. But I do know the kids use the park up till 10 o'clock, playing basketball and stuff in the, in the summer.
The idea, I think, of the lighting would be behind the lettering, so that it kind of just shows up. It's not going to be extensive lighting.
The other thing is, and I don't mean, that's the wrong way to say it, but I, I think we all call it the Thompson Mazzarella Park, and when were the first names decided that you wanted those on there as well?
That's why it was part of the master plan, and that was part of the approval process when the park was first named, and I think there is something, because we did check exactly what was approved by the town board, I'm not sure if it did, but that's a name, the full name that was approved.
Okay, that's my question.
Is, is there, is there going to be included in that signage information about that is also the entry, the new entrance to Star Library?
We've been having discussions on how to include the library sign, and if we have anything that shows that immediately.
The second page, the sign that we, after.
Yeah, there's a, it's another sign that indicates where you turn for the library, which is slightly in the entrance area of the park itself, which has got, I don't know if you, you don't have this in front of you, but there, it just calls out the library where the community center is, and shows that the head is the pool, athletic fields, tennis courts, and frost trails.
It doesn't say Star Library, though. It says library.
Initially, we gave that to the design person, it said Star Library. There's current signage on 308 for Star Library, and it seems to me it should continue to be on 308, not halfway down the road in the, in the park. So I think we, the library, would appreciate it if you would, we would, when you put on that sign, and if there is space for another generation, I don't know, they'll be actually at the entrance to the park and not on the, on the driveway. Particularly, as you've, you've just mentioned earlier, that you have moved the driveway to the Star Library from where it was originally, and I'm not sure that anybody informed us at the library that that was going to be happening.
Yes, the library was notified.
This is all happening on camera.
If you give them a stone, it would be acceptable. That was all the stuff for that.
Yeah, right, that part was.
So Bruce, is this just an update of what's going on here?
It's a resolution by the library.
I got it, I got it.
That's correct. What I heard was it maybe will change since then.
No, no. It's not changed since then, I don't think.
I'm going to, I, listen, I'm going to, I'm going to want to let the presenter continue with the presentation. I mean, this is for the board, really, to get updated on what's going on, I understand it. So if you guys have questions, just try to save them until after the presentation's done, and then maybe we can begin there. Although, really, you don't need to address us with these questions anyways, it's mainly for the, it's in the hands of planning boards, I think, right?
Yeah.
So, so really, we.
For the joint hearing with the town.
The planning boards, so, you know, to address these here really doesn't help us out, we're just trying to get updated, the town board wants to be updated on what's going on, so it's a good, it's time for you to get your questions together, but maybe bring up during the planning board thing, so that we can be updated here now, so, so just continue. And I'm not going to take any questions at this point from the audience. Okay?
Sure. Okay. To continue, again, on the second sheet, you'll see the sign, after you enter, enter into the, the park in the main entrance, there's a directional sign that's going to be right here before the turn to the library. The library entrance, as I mentioned earlier, has been moved to be directly across from the future community center entrance, and it allows for a little bit better traffic flow in the library, so that's a modification that has occurred probably since the last time you've seen this. The color coding here is indicating pervious and impervious paving, and the green is the impervious paving, and the pinkish reddish color is the pervious pavement. And the third sheet on your packet gives you a cross-section of the roadway, the sidewalk, and the proposed lighting, and the sidewalk is going to be down this side of roadway, down towards the existing pool, and the lighting as well is going to be on the same side as the sidewalk, as the section that you see there presents.
On lighting, how high is that pole?
15 feet. There is some, if you flip a couple ahead, you can see a couple of views of the, the light that's being selected. One view shows you the two-sided light, which would be part of, of what you'd see in the parking lot, the next sheet showing you the sidewalk, if you go to the fourth sheet forward, you'll see it along the sidewalk, which is the single light, which is a cutoff light, which is, we actually have a plan showing how the light's going to be dispersed in the poles, in the distance between the poles being about 120 feet, and trying to make sure that it's adequate lighting, but not excessive lighting.
Again, is this part of the village, or the town, where are you going to put these lights?
Well, the lights are going to continue all the way down into the town.
Because we do have lighting regulations, and hopefully you've looked at that.
Yes. So with the impervious pavement down in the parking areas, as you move down towards the, well, I should also mention, there's going to be the meadows, which is basically the community garden areas, and then there's the great lawn, which is going to be an area where the town's going to add some soils, level it off for various field uses, and as you head down towards the back part of the, of the community park, there's the proposed pavilion, which Frank will give a little more detail on, as well as the synthetic multi-use field, which is also going to include lacrosse lines on it as well. It'll be a synthetic field with drainage, so that it can be used often without having it in the condition of the field, as well as two baseball fields. So I think that that configuration's still consistent with what's been proposed initially, and it's been proposed for quite a while. Weston Sampson's goal is to move this to the Phase 1 construction, and we've been involved since September of 2011, trying to get the final details pulled together, and prepare for the Phase 1 construction, and as well as considering these other features to make sure that you don't have to go back and dig something up, or damage something that you completed. I also want to mention, I think we have another sheet here, just to mention the electrical and the water line. The water line will go down pretty much the center line of the road, and across the parklot, down towards the pavilion, and all the way to the pavilion, as well as, there's going to be a new pole added to the park entrance side of the road. It would, it's going to be coming from the opposite side of West Market, with an overhead, and then it's going to go underground from there. Now, there is also a, an electrical box that we just wanted to make people aware. It's just past the lighting details, so there'll be an electric box where the, the power will come down, and also be put in for future hookup over towards the community center. That's going to be half-buried and, and, you know, tied into the landscape, but, and there's also going to be a new pole where that's going to be carried over the roadway to. So the utilities will be going down mainly the entrance of the road, and then across the parking lot, which includes the electrical conduits and the water line. Excuse me. Also, just wanted to indicate, there's going to be a trail kiosk, and slip to that sheet. As you can see, there's a lot of sheets that we're working on, the lighting and the trails and the, which one is it? You can jump up and find it for me. Here it is. There's a, kind of a rendition of what the kiosk is going to be looking like. It starts right off the existing parking lot, which, there is currently a kind of trailhead there now, and there's some renderings of what that's going to look like, a wood structure open with ability to put information on the trails, et cetera, on the backside of it, as a, as a trailhead, and informational kiosk. And, let's see, there's probably covered most of the main items.
Richard, maintenance building.
Okay.
And the Clivas restaurant.
Yeah, we're proposing a 20 by 40 wood maintenance structure with a Clivas waterless toilet just off the back as an, an added bathroom for the area. Of course, the pavilion will have, you know, full bathrooms in it as well, and that's mainly a garaged, you know, like, maintenance structure for, you know, tractors and things like that, for lawn care, et cetera.
Is that an addition to the plan? Is this, I, the first I've heard of it, is that new?
Yeah, it's been kind of discussed, but this is really the, a formalization of where it's going to be located. It may be moving up a little bit, the final detail, but.
So it's a. But in response to the public, they felt that wanting the restroom closer to.
Right.
Children's playroom.
But the building itself was in the master plan that we adopted, right there.
Where is this? This is in our.
I just also want to mention that, of course, in the back corner here, is where the, the skate park is going to be, and.
This is the new building.
There's been some preliminary planning on that, but there hasn't been any updates regarding the actual details of what that park's going to look like.
Yeah, they're just going to move it down.
I think that covers the main components. I think maybe now Frank can talk a little bit about the pavilion, so you can see that, and then if anybody has some more questions or wants to.
Also, Victor Crenelius is here to talk about the grant applications that he's working on for different components involved.
Let me just ask this, I don't know if you were involved in the layout of the various fields, and where they would be, but I just attended the Association of Towns' annual meeting, and there was a presentation on parks and liability of a town, and I had never really thought of this, but apparently there's been some suits where, because of the configuration of the various fields, somebody gets hit if, say, baseball is happening at the same time as something is happening in another field. Has consideration been given to that, so that there is separation between this, so somebody playing baseball doesn't hit somebody playing lacrosse or soccer, or are there going to be separations between these things? And, say, even the bathroom, is somebody going to get a hit by a baseball, a foul ball, while going, coming out of the bathroom?
What I, um, our involvement has been to help finalize, we haven't really detailed the exact locations, they were already kind of gone through quite a bit of a process to get to the point where we picked up, because, again, we were to take it from here and give it to a, final plans and specifications, but looking at it and, and amount of discussion that has occurred, I think it has been considered, you know, there is a limited amount of space in some of these areas to put the fields, et cetera, so it, to me, it looks like they've thought it through, tried to fit it in the area properly. Maybe Sally or Bob can comment on that, because they were involved in the early stages of the, the process, but.
Yeah, if you look at the configuration, Joe, the, we see the small diamond on the baseball field, so the outfield's are going away from the soccer fields and the pavilion and everything, so if there's a ball hit, there's, it's going in the opposite direction from those two, from the other side.
There'll be some kind of barrier, so if it's a foul ball.
No, I have a backstop screen for foul balls.
There's some, I do have to say, Joe, because I sat through thousands of games, and cars do get, their windows have been broken with foul balls. I mean, they do, and balls have gone into the tennis courts before when they, when they've been, but I think that everyone takes that risk when they attend or they park close to a game.
Well, I'm not sure about that, Gina, because at least what I got from this program is there could be liability for the town if it's improperly designed. So, you know, window is one thing, somebody getting knocked on the head with a foul ball, and we can all imagine what kind of injuries, so I just want to make sure the committee has thought about it, and.
Joe, we, we specifically moved the, the maintenance building and the two new composting toilets, I don't know what you call them, back to the, to the west because of the foul balls. So, I mean, that's the latest thing that we've moved. Everybody's looking at that.
And in this area, we're talking about Little League field, so, you know, because our, our kids are still at the stage where they don't have the strength or the ability to hit as far.
She always underestimates us.
Unless it's my kids.
Any other questions, and Frank can present on the pavilion? Thank you.
Thanks.
So my name is Frank Mazzarella, I'm an architect, and volunteering my time to design this pavilion, which is to house basically the bathrooms, and the concession stand for the recreation center.
Frank has to use the mic, so that he can set up for fandom.
Okay. So if we look at this photograph, which I just happened to see there, the pavilion is sighted almost really in the middle of what is the entire site of the park, just south of the existing baseball field. So in my mind, I thought, on the one hand, it has to serve the kind of intense uses of all the athletic facilities associated with the kids playing baseball, the Little League soccer, groups of people, but on the other hand, it all serves the rest of the park, which is kind of a nature preserve, has a more passive activity, recreation activity of people walking through the trails into the woods, and also, the idea that the pavilion would have to be, at first, at least shut down in the wintertime, led me to create something, the one hand, on the one hand, it was very open, so that when it is shut down, we would allow people to walk through it, so it's kind of like a gateway pavilion. I don't even consider it a building, because half of the structure is open, which would allow views, and people to walk through the building, would allow views out to the landscape. For example, when the building is shut down in fall, and there are people out viewing, they want to view the mountains, or go walk along the trails, or in the winter, people could be doing cross-country skiing, or just walking along the trails, they could stop and use this space and just rest. I've situated the two, I pulled apart two parts of the program, situated on the left side, the bathroom pieces, two men and young female bathrooms, and on the right, the concession stand. And it's kind of funnel-like shape, is an attempt to draw people in, and not present a sod, but something that is open, which is a roof, which allows you to walk through. So that led me to situate a small courtyard in the middle, kind of a contemporary space, where people could be sitting on some benches around that courtyard, people using the concession stand, could be sitting, seated on perhaps some fixed wooden picnic benches there. So it allows both of these types of activities to take place. In the back, there's a terrace overlook, which will allow, you know, groups of kids to be out there, seated on a stone bench, it's a little bit just above the farmland there, and so, so it's a great overlook there, viewing not only the immediate land, but there's going to be a buffer area, which maybe have tall grasses, and then there will eventually be the, the more cultivated farmland further south, and allow people to look out there. The idea is to make this a, a sustainable structure as well. The fact that we situated a courtyard in the middle, I wanted to bring the water into the building, so in the best scenario, that water could be recycled even for the gray water, for flushing the toilets, et cetera, it's kind of a rain garden. And that would be, it's like an inverted hip roof, that would be a metal kind of gray weathering roof, where I've looked at material which is a lot like zinc, it's less expensive, but would weather kind of a matte gray finish. I think of the building as a, as a wooden structure, kind of a, an essay on how one might build wood. I think the most obvious reference is some of the kind of post and beam farm structures that you see around here, so that when you view it from the outside, even, you're seeing the underside of this roof with the post. roof with the post and beams and the purlins and the, the tongue roof sheathing, et cetera. And even the facade itself, I think of it as something that could be perhaps even built off-site, because people have spoken about the possibility of getting volunteer help, so that maybe these panels could be built, and they have some kind of vertical or decorative element that's built with a jigsaw, that people contribute, and they could build them off-site and then come and hang or screw them on a substructure. So that would also, you know, help to reduce cost and facilitate the construction. There's also a pergola element on the back, which kind of ties together the whole, the whole structure, the two parts, and that would be a wooden structural element and flowering, some kind of creeping flowering plant would grow up and cover that and provide some vegetation and shade on the back. And the idea was to create a place, I think, which, when I walked down, to me, is a little bit lacking, that would be create a more of a place there for gathering, an open space, a kind of celebration of the landscape, and at the same time accommodating the more intense uses of the, of the athletic activities, but almost a little square down there, where perhaps even there could be a performance down there. I mean, it's almost like a ban shell shape, it kind of flex the sound outward, so there could be people out here, maybe before this parking area is put in, you almost have, there could be some kind of performance or a market down there as well. I think that covered everything.
There's a couple of questions, yeah. So we're going to close the bathrooms in the winter?
That was, you know, the restroom of the town, was that the rather than having to heat or cool that space in the winter, that after Thanksgiving, they would empty the pipes and shut, and shut it off.
But, but the other restrooms, the compost, whatever you call those things, they'll be open?
And the idea was also to allow the possibility in the future, that if we do decide to heat or cool that space in the summer, even in the winter, we would have kind of pre-installation, so maybe it would be wired, so that very easily we could put in maybe a sport heating or some type of fan, or you'd maybe to cool it in the, in the summer.
But the roof would be sufficient to take solar panels if we wanted to go that way?
Well, that's another advantage, we have a south-facing facade there, so we could even put solar panels on the south-facing portion of that hip roof. So it's another, something that could be adapted in the future.
But Bruce, are there other bathrooms that are down there as...
No, just a porta potty.
That's one of the shortcomings of the place now, it's, and the porta potties go away as soon as the snow flies. So what we're trying to do is establish something, but, again, we get the heating costs and everything else. The, whatever you call those toilets, they're, they're the solution for the year-round operation, but you're not going, they're not going to work with the volume of people that you might have it when all the games are going or something like that. So that, that's when you, you need more for seasonal peaks.
Joe, the design allows for it to change in the future, but now the town is making the decision that it's, you know, it's seasonal, but if the need is there, we have the capacity to do it.
And the concession stand, we already have a concession stand that, how is this going to work with our existing concession stand?
This, the, the idea of this one is, is actually more for the, the sports complex, where the other ones for the pool complex.
So this would only operate when there are games?
Pretty much, I think that's the idea. The other thing is, to be honest with you, based on funding, this part of it may not get too far, it may just be an empty space at first, right? Yes, no?
No, it's based on, you know, the building is going to be designed so that way it can be phased in, based on the amount of money that we have to spend on it. We have the $100,000 grant from, from the development funds, and we're matching that with another $100,000 from the funds that we have. And we'll see how far we can get with that, the volunteer labor, and put as much of that structure together. You know, the roof has to be done, the foundation has to be done, and the restrooms have to be done, and we'll see how far we go with that.
Joe, you're concerned about that in the wintertime. I just came back from Lake Placid, where I was cross-country skiing and snowshoeing. And when you're out in the woods, you go out in the woods, and both myself and my wife, when we were out, had to go, and you just go, okay? So it's not something that people that are cross-country skiing or snowshoeing are worried about.
There, there are no bathrooms at Poets Walk, and it's beautiful. I mean, I think it's what we're, this part of the park seems to be the gateway to the natural part, so seems to be nicely thought of.
Was the soccer field always synthetic, Bruce? When did that change?
The, the idea with the soccer field was, at the time, five years ago, there was grant money and there were donors. The grant money, I don't know whether it's, the grant money's still there, that some of the donors have disappeared, but there might be other ones out there.
What's the difference between the artificial turf and the natural turf? And are we, have we decided, is that the recommendation that we go with that, or...
Well, the fallback plan is, is to go to natural.
Can you give us some history, like why, what does artificial give us that natural doesn't?
Artificial gives us 24/7 playing ability, where the turf, a grass field, it's damp, you play on it.
You're done.
You've done, yeah, that's it. And one of the problems that we have in Reinbeck, we have, basically, we have six full-size soccer fields in Reinbeck, and at least half of them can be underwater for weeks at a time.
So this will ensure that we have one working soccer field at all times during the season?
Yeah, and, and it was also thought, there were other thoughts about it, you know, it's a multi-use surface, could be used for lacrosse, could be used for football, could be divided up into little soccer fields, things like that. But it's also something that attracts, it's, it's a possible source of revenue, because...
Rented out.
Yeah, people will come to play on, on that kind of turf. Down in Westchester, they get a lot of money renting out the turf fields down there.
And the size of it really gives us the ability to break it up into smaller soccer fields, so that way there's more flexibility in terms of how many people can play.
Sorry, I'm a little ignorant about this, but is it easy to re-line artificial turf?
You, you, what, what they tend to do is they tend to paint it once a year, and if you want to have different fields, you use different color paints.
Have you ever been, have you ever been down to Marist? Marist is, is the white lines are the soccer field, the yellow lines are the lacrosse field in there.
So they live there, they cohabitate, and you just...
Yeah, they cohabitate, that's correct.
What is the cost difference in the artif, roughly?
I can answer that question.
Okay, Victor.
Your Soccer Foundation grant, which is due September 1st, which is one of many things I'm about to discuss, is actually an in-kind grant for the synthetic field and its installation. So you don't get cash.
From the state?
No, 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 this is from a private foundation, from the Soccer Foundation. So they come in and they install it for you, so you basically don't have the cost of sod or planting anything in the building. And that's the purpose of the grant, is to encourage the use of synthetic material. And that is the grant.
Let me, we're kind of transitioning from the pavilion to the field, so let me remind people that Frank volunteered his time to do the design, and we thank him for that. Appreciate that.
It's beautiful, thank you.
I think the design kind of, the concept kind of complements the idea of extending the use of the park throughout the year, rather than just the summer seasonal type usage, and it also supports the concept of multi-generational use. It gives a place for seniors to sit, use, or gather and so on, and enjoy the park as well for the future, so, so just to recognize those two points about the park.
Could we, I mean, if we have a break, maybe could we get closer and look at it, or just...
Yeah.
It's beautiful, thank you.
So, any further comments on the pavilion? Anybody have any questions about that? Okay. So, go ahead, Victor.
Money's out of your question.
Money's, yeah.
All right. This is a really interesting project, because it's phased on a number of different levels, and we have to marry it to the requirements of the timing of the various funding sources, and at the same time, we have to kind of adapt to hope that the funding sources are going to be there after next, next of the timing. That said, essentially what we're starting with is the infrastructure. I have an LGE grant in for $50,000, joint town-village for engineering, which should get us into the infrastructure, which we wanted, the water, sewer, and road infrastructure. The village will need to be the applicant, or all of that, largely because they own this water and sewer facilities. What we're, what I'm proceeding with is an environmental facilities request, which is unlikely to have a grant associated with it, but there may be a subsidy, a federal subsidy on the loan, which would mean a 0% loan, 30 years, the cost of installing the infrastructure.
And what amount are you looking at for that?
Well, we're still working on the, on the final budget on that. We're including the changes in the road, which we're allowing to do, the water and sewer lines are going underneath them, the parking lot situation, and the extension of the water and the sewer lines through the park. I am actually working with the village on a proposal for some increased water and sewer infrastructure. We're in the early stages of that, I'd like to roll this into it, and I'll be back to you to negotiate what we need to negotiate in order to make that happen. But I, and obviously, I don't want to have borrowing being the basis of this, I want to offset all of that with grants as much as possible, but there may be portions of this that would be required to match, and if you think about it from a financial point of view, it would be cheaper to provide the match with a 0% loan spread out over 30 years than it would to take it out of your own capital pot, because after you close on the loan, you're making money on it just because of inflation. It's the same issue we have with the 0% loan at Vennett for Cove. So how we work that out and what the specifics are, we basically have until mid-April, early May to do. That needs to be in for its first review for the state's intended use plan, both on the water and wastewater side.
Victor, when you say a loan, though, I assume the loan has to be paid back at some point, and are you looking at the town to pay back a loan?
Well, if it's 0% or a portion, and you have, it's, it's a question of whether or not you want to take it out of your existing dedicated funds or projected dedicated revenues that come into the park fund as a capital expense, or you want to extend it out over 30 years at 0%, which would be a lot less, it costs you less. It would be, it would be substantial cheaper to do that one. And I, and I can show an amortization schedule so that we have our numbers and...
Well, it just gives me pause to think that we're taking on a financial obligation.
I understand that.
You know, we, we don't have a lot of money as it is.
No, I do understand that, I do understand that. As I said, for example, we, we're going to have a June-July submission to the CITE, which is one of the most convoluted grant processes I've ever been involved with. What they basically have done, what the governor has done, is he's rolled together a whole series of grants, waterfront development, parks, some of the community development block grants that Dutchess County actually doesn't get, a few other, the Green Initiative Grant Program, a wide variety of grants. You come at the grant, the pool of the option, and each of these grants has different enabling legislation, so they have different requirements, but they're all in this one box. You come in with the project and your budget, and you try and define, it's my experience is, what your leading edge into the situation is. Interestingly enough, NYSERDA has joined this in the last round, and the most fundable part, other than the parks portion, is the porous surface in the parking lot, because it's a green initiative. So we're going to use that and the road work, which will offset some of the borrowing that could potentially be done on the waters, and drinking water and, and clean water side of the, the sewer side of the equation, at 0% as a grant. So we're going to just lay the bedrock and then break it up into pieces and fund it, grant fund all of that.
I like the word grant, I don't like the word loan.
I understand that, I understand that. But you will be required, in the course of, of the CFA process, and we can ask for up to a million, a million-two in that, you will be required to put up a match of some sort. The match can include all of your planning up to this point, retroactively, and the costs associated with that, so that's a good thing. It can include in-kind services or materials or volunteer labor. The way that's defined is that if you have a lawyer donating his time to a project, the in-kind contribution is equivalent to the hourly rate for his professional services. If you have somebody clearing brush or doing something that they're not professional, it's not their professional field of endeavor, then it's minimum wage.
Or an architect who donated his services.
Well, exactly, you're, that...
Yeah, the architect also takes time as a planner, Mark Bruminsky donated some time, so, you know, keeping track of all that and using that as a match would be very helpful.
So that's the CFA process, which is this summer. The other thing that is this summer is the Tony Hawk Skate Park grant, which is July 1st. That's been ready to go for, for a time, but like some of these grants, they're going to want to see you implement it within a year-to-18-month period, and I think the priority of getting the infrastructure in first is really what has to happen.
Is the, we're, the infrastructure, we're looking at getting it done by August?
It's possible. It is...
I doubt whether it's going to be done by August.
Do we have a timeframe, Sally or Bruce?
Well, we're, we're staring at each other. The, what we're being driven by is the block grant, and so what we really want to do is we want to have the ADA restrooms up in August, if at all possible. The only way they're going to be up is if we have the plumbing and the electricity running back there. So everything else might not be done, but you'll have a couple of restrooms that you can get into that work, and you'll have a roadway of some sort to get there.
And then that will satisfy requirements for the funding.
Right, right, and that's what we're driving to.
Yep, yep, good.
And so, yeah, I think the planning board is aware of it, and so we're hoping that, you know, the joint planning process will help us expedite the review.
Fantastic.
And I can use the community development block grant as a, a match to the CFA process. I'm going to come back to you all for a discussion at some point about how we can reach up a political ladder, both on the state and federal level, to see if we can get some support.
Is there support on the state level?
Yes, of course.
And, and the federal?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
Great.
In fact, yes, the answer to that is yes.
Great.
Not to worry about that. Also, I may have a John's point of view, but I've been watching the funding process now for the last 20-some years, and I see, instead of member initiatives and appropriations, I see large amounts of money that are being shoved into state and federal coffers or administrative budgets as discretionary funding to be assigned post-budget passage. And that, I think, is the, the way they're getting around that, and so we need to be out there. I think we need to have a serious discussion with the DOT, and I'm going to take you down to Rich Peters regarding the road situation. I went with them with the corridor grant, and they said, "It's a parking lot, it's not a corridor, it's a parking lot." It's not a corridor, it's a parking lot."
Well, there's also going to be a letter prepared for the town board and the village board to request a reduction in the speed limit so it matches the village speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour and to extend that to the town garage. So the.
The forty-five mile an hour zip is going to come down?
Yeah. The engineer that worked on the traffic analysis will be preparing that letter. He's a former DOT person and, you know, it's our hope that the town board, village board will approve sending that letter, making that as well.
Why do we want to lower the speed limit?
The planning board, both planning boards and the CAD and committee are requesting that we keep it thirty-five, we extend it to thirty-five miles an hour to the town garage before we have activity at the library in the future, you know, with the expansion of recreational activities.
And sidewalk.
In, in the future, the community sector, the goal is to really, you know, reduce the speed limit for better safety there.
But we want to reduce it now or when the community?
It takes a long time. DOT is always amenable to reducing speed limits. So I think we start that process and work on it until we get them to agree with it.
Well, I have engaged special projects at DOT in a whole sort of more pedestrian-friendly, less vehicular intensive approach to the area from the intersection out to the park. I think, I think you've got an area there where you can do safer routes to school concepts. You can do a variety of different things that will actually, actually decrease the speed limit in terms of bump outs perhaps or.
Also, the design, the grant, I mean, the grant has got to be designed so that way sidewalks could be installed along 308 in the area of our land anyway. I'm sure the village would love to see that continued.
Yeah.
So if we can get a grant to do that, then the plan would be designed to install sidewalks.
DOT is in a bit of an upheaval right now because they're closing out the end of the last five-year funding from the federal side. And they have had a two-year funding stream set up for, from this last Congress, which is, I think they all feel is fairly inadequate to what they want to do. But they're revamping their programs, combining them, you know, coalescing certain things and changing the priorities. So I think we need to go down and make presentations if we can get some special project support there. And then September 1st, we have a deadline for the soccer field. If we get that, the announcement will be made by January and they'll want to see it in, within eighteen months.
Great.
Before we lose that. So that's currently the time.
And we need to be ready for that, for that, for that coming across in the course.
Taking a step back to the CFA, which we're anticipating somewhere in June or July. Those funds are expended through the Regional Economic Development Councils. The successes that have, this region has had have been largely focused in the last several years on the Poughkeepsie waterfront and a variety of things down there. And I think we need to get in there and really make our case. So.
With whom do we do that Victor?
Let's all.
Well, Ned Sullivan, Dennis Curry, I'll just find a couple of friends, certainly Mark Olivaro, Ron Hicks, just look for some friends. It's, it's very challenging. They're looking at the big economic development projects.
Just.
Who should.
And that's where, that's where we have issues here because virtually everything we're attempting to do is structured to be sustainable and relatively low maintenance. So we can offer jobs in, in terms of this discussion, which is the goal.
So I think we just have to find some friends and see what they can do to support.
Great.
Does anybody have any questions? That sort of takes me through September at this point.
How much money does Thompson Mazzarella have at this point?
Well, we're figuring roughly there's about 700,000 that's been.
That's what we have?
Yeah. And, and we're going to debate over the, you know, the park lands part of it, but that, that's included in there.
And that's just the town side. I mean, I know the village doesn't have anything to put on the plate other than their lower income status, which makes them more eligible for some of this funding than the town is.
The village has a lower income standard than the town?
Yes, it does.
What's the differential, do you know?
Well, we're waiting for the new census data to come into play and we'll know that in April.
What was it, do you know?
I think it was like a $10,000 difference.
Oh, so significant, twenty, twenty, almost twenty percent.
Absolutely, because you have seniors.
Sure, of course, of course.
Walkable villages, which is great.
More retired people now in the community.
Fastest growing demographic.
Well, apparently we have more seniors than any other town.
Town in the county.
Something in the newspaper.
Victor, just on a side, can you shoot me a note about Vandenberg Cove and the?
I'm having, I'm meeting with Shelley at 10 o'clock next Tuesday.
Okay.
To finalize all of the invoicing going in.
Okay, thanks.
So we're, we're in gear on that.
Jeremy's cool and?
Hey, I left a message for Natalie today saying I was coming here tonight, she wanted a word to know, she just get back and go by five. Haven't heard from her and I'm sure I will in the next few days, about a month.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Also, I believe that the town board and the town clerk received a copy of the accomplishments that this committee has worked on, just to give you an updated, written update report. Sharon worked really hard on it.
It's significant.
It's good.
Thank you.
Is that what's in here? What kind?
Tab, tab two. So they have an idea.
You guys have been steadfast. I know you've been chipping away at this for years, so thank you.
Bob, who were all the, we, we send these reports to several foundations now, right? With Thompson, Frost.
Frost.
Winnicky, sorry, anybody else?
Village, village board and the town board.
Okay, so that's five. Okay. Yeah, Sina Hudson would be.
That's my idea. I'll, I'll look at it and see.
And we also have to send one to the county because of the block grant. They, they require monthly.
You can easily do that.
Yeah, let's.
Or have it, or just send it.
Yeah, I could call into them to go down and, and meet with them and to discuss the community development grant as well as the easement for the county, right? Just to be sure that, you know, it's, it's not a secret review, you don't have to sign off on it. So I'll.
The, at the next town board meeting, I'm just going to bring in a encapsulation plan for the, the relics that are in the fields. The, Michael DeCola and Robert Murray put that together, working with Shipau. And we've got to make a couple little changes to it and get the town board to approve it and then we can move ahead with that, that issue, so.
All right. I don't know if Rich addressed that, but the Great Lawn, which is one piece of the archaeological area that Phil will be brought in. There will be no, really, construction happening there, we can be digging into the earth there, but it really provides a great opportunity for a variety of recreational, both passive and active uses. And it also helps us respond to the needs that were identified by the group of soccer people that wanted more area for soccer. This certainly can be an area there.
This would be an informal soccer, soccer area. We won't stripe it or?
No, we can stripe it.
Yeah, they can line it or whatever.
It's not a problem. Well, you can use, just line and straight the field and, you know, and then it just wears off.
Or it could be, or it could be non-soccer field for other uses.
It could be used for.
Anything you want.
Kites or.
Yeah.
Frisbee or.
This isn't the part of the field closest to the garden?
Uh, yeah, between the garden and where the soccer field is.
Well, right across from the basketball court.
Yeah. Terrific.
Great, thanks Victor. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions? Is anyone in touch? I think you've all got my email. VictorCornelius@AOL.com, one word. Thank you.
So, we have a.
This was a scenario that we had to make a decision on and Brad and I got together, it was a scenario where we had to make a decision based on continuing the construction. And this involved blocks for the lane, the mounting of the lane fixtures because we were using hardy board siding. The hardy board representative recommended that we use blocks. They were not specified in the initial project, but because we had to have them and because we were going to hold up construction, we had to make a decision on that and it was $1,135. It was a scenario that I didn't have the time to come to you folks and ask you to make, to approve it, so I got my grant and, I don't know if we're going to be arrested for that, but maybe.
It looked really good too, you know, the size of the blocks that go, that, they blended with the siding, so it was.
It, it was a scenario that, it was, it was a no-brainer. We, we had to do it. It was the right thing to do and we made the decision to do it.
Wait.
No, no.
February 11th.
Okay, April 1st of?
Two years ago, it was May. Last year, we didn't really do much with it, but it took us until the end of May, two years ago, to get through everything.
Yeah.
John, you have in here, in your affidavit, like COOs, nineteen thousand, six hundred, uh, three hundred and thirty dollars. But Ed Matic says that it's seven thousand, eight fifty for COOs.
What's his total there? Ed's total?
Is he conducting it?
I can't.
I think he's auditing you, yeah. I think this is the audit.
Getting.
Right, he must be including several things. I think somehow we'll have to reconcile.
Let me, let me, let me cut that short for you. I have no idea. I have absolutely no idea. All I know is that those people bring checks up and I enter them. And they call it a COO. I get, I get checks from J Dean for COOs and from Kimberly for COOs. Does that all include Ed's area?
Sue Hart Sworn, I'm president of Star Library Board. I just want to be, let you all be cognizant that if our, when our road changes, our entrance changes, we do need signage on Route 308, not just signage interior in the park because we need to have people find us there. We have too many groups, community groups using the library. We want access, vehicular and pedestrian access.
Do you think Sue, that, or, or, and/or Sally, that there could be room on this community recreation park? It could say, "Community Recreation Park and Star Library."
I think that would be the place to.
I, I haven't actually seen that, so it's difficult for me to say. Here, Victor. Just, just so long there as there is, you know, signage on Route 308.
Thank you Sue. For the comments?
Hi, Linda Murray. I just want to bring up a point of procedure, supervisor Trout. At the beginning, when the park committee began to present, there was a discussion about really where the town board's role is. And the town board created the park committee. And yes, the, the application is before the planning board, but at the planning board meeting, the planning board in December said, "Really, it's in the town board's hands." So the disadvantage of not being able to have all of the boards together is that everybody's saying, "Well, it's really up to the town board" or "It's really up to the planning board." And since you, the town board, adopted the master plan and you created the park committee, you do have a say-so in what's going on here and you do have a say-so in what's going on here today. They're coming here to give you an update and it's a really important update because from my perspective, and I'm a parent and soccer coach and I'm very much involved with athletics. And I sent a letter in today to outline, which I don't know if you had an opportunity to read it, but it outlined what's, very briefly, what's been going on with the athletic community and the park. And as part of your master plan that the town board adopted, you said seventeen acres of farmland would be taken out of production and created and turned into recreational fields. Currently, it's less than eight acres. And we're very happy that there's the Great Lawn, but it's not dedicated to athletic fields. As, as we've heard here tonight, it's going to be used for kite flying and other sorts of things. There's a great need for athletic fields. There's the Spanish American League, there's Women's League, there's Men's League. We, in essence, for just soccer, travel soccer, not including high school soccer and men's soccer and, you know, just, just random people doing pickup soccer, we don't have enough fields. We have four, and we did an analysis and presented that to the planning board in December. I also presented a petition of over 250 signatures requesting more fields than what is on the plan. And I'm not taking away from all of the work that's been done. I think it's an incredible project and I'm so excited about it. That's why I've spent hundreds of hours frankly on this myself, looking into this. So I'm excited about it. I want it to go forward, but I really want the community needs to be heard and as a town board, that's your responsibility. You adopted a master plan. And on top of that, when, when this project came forth and the town asked for funds from Dutchess County, Mr. Kiner, this is an important point. The Dutchess County said, "We'll give you 200 and I think 80,000 dollars towards the acquisition of this property, but not with the conservation easement that you have on that property." No, you have to change the terms of the amended, of the conservation easement and acknowledge that the sole use, primary use of this property is recreation. And it goes on to identify active recreation as baseball, soccer and other organized sports. And it said, it also says, "To the extent consistent with active, active and passive recreation, then you can use farmland." Now, Robert Murray had presented a plan to the planning board and this is, it's a plan that I hope the town board's going to take a look at. I don't, it's, let's see, there were fields south of the pavilion.
We've seen, we've seen that.
Field south of the pavilion and interestingly, you know, I, I think Mr. Mazzarella indicated that it would be, the pavilion is central. I, I think it would be even more centrally located if there were a couple of fields back there. And we're even asking for seventeen acres, but we do want more, more recreational fields, athletic fields. There's a need in our community for it and, and as evidenced by the petitions that were submitted, as evidenced by, I think it was sixteen or seventeen people that spoke at the hearing in December. And there were attorneys present representing citizens of, concerned citizens of Rhinebeck who pleaded to bring, bring the community back into the discussion and acknowledge the needs, needs of athletics. So I'm really a voice for not only the children, but for adults who want to play sports. We don't have, have enough athletic fields. I'm, I happen to be on the soccer board and a lot of the times, our conversations are dominated by the lack of field use or lack of wood fields. Mr., Mr. Washburn indicated we have six fields. We have four fields. We don't even. We don't even use the fields at the fairgrounds because they're always a mess. They're a complete mess. We have two at Baptist, don't belong to us. They could take them away on a year's notice. We have one at Chancellor, we use them at the discretion of the school. So if there's something else going on, we get bumped. The only field we have that's ours is Stone Church. And with over 200, just travel soccer members, not counting Spanish American League, the Women's League, Men's League, you could see the logistics of scheduling and needs, and need for, the need for fields.
Does anyone know how much the incoming class in September dropped for Chancellor?
I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but, you know, Mr. Gelb and somebody else raised on, on the board, how the, there's an increase in senior citizens in this community. Well, wouldn't creating a comprehensive center bring families to Rhinebeck? Do we want to make it so that it's family, too? I think so. I hope so. I hope so that it's not just going to become a senior citizen bedroom community where people retire. Let's welcome families by building a multi, multi-generational community center where your grandma's walking on the trails, and your kids are playing baseball, somebody else is playing soccer, somebody else is playing field hockey, somebody else is playing lacrosse. Lacrosse has spoken at these meetings. It's the fastest growing sport in the nation, and they don't have any fields. They have no fields. They beg, borrow, and steal for fields. And we're dealing with 80 acres. We're just asking for a few more fields. And I don't think that it's too much, and it's part of your master plan. It's part of your master plan. And you do play a vital role here today in telling the board that you created to go back, listen to the community needs, and make sure those community needs are recognized. I think the gateway for the pavilion is beautiful. Let it have the open space and, and design with the fields incorporated. That's part of open space, too. It's not so bad to have athletic fields going through the gateway. And really make it centrally located. In terms of the grant that we're under the gun for, from my research, we, we can apply for, and I'm not looking to delay this project by any means, but if it comes into that, you can apply for a one-year extension. From what I've learned, hasn't been applied for yet. So let's do it, and let's do it right. And please, listen to the needs of the community. Listen to them, and let our children, let our adults, let everybody be able to use this park. Thank you.
Linda, we received your letter, and we can put that part into the record? Any further comments in the public?
Well, I guess I have one. I appreciate what I believe Linda's asking for, but I think it's a matter of, of ideal situations, and it's a matter of convenience. We have always had a very spread-out soccer, set of soccer fields in Rhinebeck. I can remember coaching at the Baptist home, roughing at the fairgrounds, and then coaching at, at Stone Church the same day, same afternoon. We have, with the fields we have, it's negotiations, right? If, if you negotiate with the Baptist home, if the club negotiates with the Baptist home, or the Latino League, or the adults, or the Women's League, if, if they negotiate and get the time and take care of the fields, they can use them. And lacrosse has approached us this year to use Stone Church, okay? And we try to coordinate that through, with, with the soccer club. But I don't think anybody has been turned away from playing soccer.
This isn't about soccer, though.
No, I, I don't, but, but wait, wait. If 250 people sign, let me finish.
Can you not talk from the audience, please? You should not be shouting from the audience.
If 250 people signed a petition about soccer, which I believe the petition was about, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I apologize for that, it was because they thought that children were denied the opportunity to play soccer. And that is not true. That is absolutely not true. We have more than enough facilities right now, they're just not conveniently located in the same place. And I'm really, I'm really distressed by the information that's floating around. The lady from Hyde Park who came, who was one of the 17 that stood up, and, and spoke about the soccer complex in, in Hyde Park that happens to be on school land, that took years to make, that those three fields that are there. And that, that was put there with the, the ball fields, but it took many, many years to build up. They didn't have the fields anyplace else. They were completely dependent on the schools. They were playing, and, and the schools were terrible, the, you know, the pitches, the conditions of them. We're actually, other than the drainage, we're pretty well situated for a small town. We're nowhere's near what Hyde Park is. So I'm, I'm okay, I think the committee has, has bent over backwards to make changes. They've listened to the input, they listened, but, but it's time where we have to start deciding as a town board, since it's been put back to us, whether we're going to stay the course and do what we said we were going to do, or we're going to stop everything and redesign.
I think the, another issue for me is that recreation, and I'm from a huge soccer family. My boys still play, and they played for 15 years each, and they still play in the adult league now. And they've never been turned away from playing ever. But I think that the issue of what constitutes recreation is where we have to take a broader view, to make it sustainable and to make it doable. That it just can't be regimented athletic fields. And that's what I think the park committee has done a very good job at doing. That's just my opinion.
I, I want to also lend you my support again, and thank you for the years and years of diligent, hard work that you've done in addressing this. And, you know, I support you, I support the committee, I support the vision.
And you did reach out to the community for, for input.
I'll share some of what the committee has been doing. We, over the years, have worked very closely with the different leagues that we have, the soccer leagues, the baseball leagues. We have included the high school, where we've had the superintendent at our meetings, and the gentleman that is involved with all of the athletic activities at the school. So there was constant communication as to what was happening, what the demographics were. We certainly had a major impact with the archaeology and what it did to change some of the planning efforts. We now talk to people that are part of the soccer league, and they are very pleased and comfortable with what we're doing, and very supportive. For some reason, they get intimidated and have not talked at the public hearings, and we have to be sure that they do speak out, because they're talking to us on the streets and telling us that they're okay with the plans, and they feel it does reflect what their needs are, looking at the community as a whole. We have listened to the group that feels that the needs are greater, and it really, you know, we, the committee paused and said, okay, let's look at what we've done and made the decision to look at the archaeology area and to have the ability to use that for more active as well as passive recreation. That was a big, major decision on our part to go back to something that we would, had, you know, had a historical resource for the community. We also listened when they said that there was a need for the restroom to be closer, and looked at some of the initiatives that were going on with using waterless toilets and placed the clive with in an area that was more convenient. We have not ignored the information that has been brought to us, but looking at a limited site and recognizing that agriculture has played a very important role in this community. And with the first easement that was developed, as well as the easement that was approved by the county, that open space and recreation and agriculture was also an important part of the park. So we've done our best. We, you know, we have a lot of land, but there are restrictions based on how this land has been used in the past, and how, you know, what our vision was for the future. So we thank you for listening and really supporting what the committee has done, and we hope it really reflects what the community needs are.
Thank you.
Did you make sure to break to look at that?
That'd be great.
Could, we just have a short break so we can look at the design?
Take about 15 minutes?
10, 5.
All right, we're back in session, and moving on to liaison reports. Anybody have anything to add?
I am going to take over the board of assessment review from Gina, since I'm working with the assessor's office. And we do need two new members. I'm doing...
We mentioned that, did we?
Yeah, we, I'm putting out feelers. I think I've got a couple of interested people, and I'll keep working on it.
They have to go to class on that.
I'm lost what we're talking about.
Liaison reports.
Caffeine.
Oh, okay. I have something. I have something on that. I'm doing the safety inspection CEO.
Joe, what's that?
Yeah, Bruce and I have talked about that. This is what I've been doing for the last three years, so I want to continue with it. Bruce has no problem with that.
What is that?
This is safety inspection CEO.
Oh, CEO, okay. All right, okay, sounds good.
So, John, you'll make a note, or do whatever we have to do to tell the world?
Do we need to have Joan update the website on those liaison assignments? Okay. Are you finished, Joe?
Yeah.
The waterfront committee is applying for a grant for a couple of trees, and they're, they asked for approval to hire BB the Clown, but not as BB the Clown, for waterfront day as a magician, to do her magic act. So I think the clown is kind of scary as a magician.
Clowns are scary.
So I, they're moving ahead. Oh, and it looks like they're going to have the secret boat in Clearwater.
Yep. Yeah, that's, that's been booked.
Again, is it within budget?
That's free.
Yeah.
No, I, I mean, that I know for the Clearwater.
BB the Clown is within budget.
Is free?
No, but it's within budget.
Okay.
Bless you.
They, they, last year, they started a fundraising part with the waterfront day, so I, I think you'll have no problems with that.
So it should be self-funding?
Pretty much.
Yeah, that's what they've gone to. You had more? I have got more, but...
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I'm not ready now. I've cut my paper.
Okay. Just a couple of things. The rec committee on Wednesday night's going to go through the safety plans for the camp and pool. This is 36 pages each. It's very painful, but it's something we have to do. And Joe, if you can get that presentation, I can give it to the, to the rec committee so they can look at it.
Oh, right, that's right, right. Sounds like everything he recommended we don't do, we're doing on the park, you'll see.
Okay, well, yeah, but...
But I'll, I'll circulate it.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Just a heads up, as you know, the boiler's been acting up here. Bobby's been getting some, some quotes. The, the first blush is $48,000, and that does not include the asbestos remediation, so we, we don't have that. We might be able to get through a few more years, who knows?
Are we going to go with another oil burner? Are we going to look at LP, or?
They were, they were, it's a different thing. I have it here, but I...
It's a...
Well, one of these things.
Okay. It's something we're going to have to deal with in the next.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely some kind of a hydronic, but I don't know what. The other thing was the landfill report from Jay's in the Rived over the weekend. I've asked Manix just to, to review it quickly, because the, some of the leachate levels are up because the water table's up, but that's going to get submitted. And there's nothing we can do about, we don't have to prove it or anything, because we pay them to, to do the report and send it in. I just, and I'll circulate that to you folks. That's pretty much it for me.
When Tom sends us extensive emails weighing in on subjects, his opinion's always really important, or I find it valuable, but are we paying him for that?
No.
Okay.
No. He submits bills based on projects that he's, for work that he's been asked to do, not that he initiates himself.
Any more?
No.
Okay. All right. All right, moving on to business. Motion to approve abstract 2B vouchers V1A2 through V231 for $683,487.39.
Motion.
Second.
This includes the money for the library in this amount?
Yeah, that's the library's...
The big ticket item, yeah.
All in favor, any, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Let me just, let me, since you made that comment, it's important to mention it's for both libraries, right on there?
I didn't see, I only saw the one for, the Star Library in here, but that doesn't mean that, no, Morton isn't here. It's 35, yeah, it's the full, the 35 plus the two.
Right, $35,000 plus...
Two and four, $230...
Star Library, $225,000.
$225.
Right. Page five.
Yep, thank you.
All right. That was item one. Item two, resolution to approve abstract AP2C voucher, AP232 through AP237, the amount of $2,086.72.
Motion.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item three is a resolution approving capital projects, and the amounts payable for 2012 abstracts for $6,076.48.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item four is a resolution approving preliminary capital project for 213 abstracts for $2,009.60.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item five, motion to approve budget transfers and amendments in tab seven?
A motion.
Second.
Any discussion on those? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item six is a motion to approve a town hall use application for the Rhinebeck Drama Club. That is for April 14th from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. A motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item seven is also a motion to approve town hall use for the Boy Scouts of America. That's from April 6th, from 9:00 a.m. till noon, and on April 13th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same for a motion and second to approve the town hall use for League of Women Voters on the March 23rd from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
We had, item nine, we approved. That was the cemetery bits for the monument markers. Item ten is resolution setting the salaries for the program camp coordinators. That would be your item ten?
Motion.
Or, sorry, tab twelve. Motion and second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is lower than our budgeted amount, correct?
Yeah, we, we split the job because we were concerned about coverage for the summer with the candidate pool, so we went, split it in half. And so we have two adults, and it's a thousand dollars under budget, and it's two thousand dollars under last year's budget for the same position, so we continue.
Hey, we approve that, right, Jan?
So what, it's fourteen thousand in all for-
Yeah, instead of the fifteen that's in the budget, which I cut.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. Item eleven is a motion to approve the two thousand thirteen planning and zoning fee schedule. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, could I ask a question?
Sure.
What kind of, these are for the people who are going to work at the summer camp?
Which one? The, you're talking about the, you're talking about the last one, right?
The rec director?
Wait a minute, let me, do we, do we get the approval for eleven, John, for the zoning planning? Okay. Going back to the salaries for the program camp coordinators.
Okay, okay, so this is not for the counselors or employees?
Yeah, it's two employees. It's two employees.
Just for the two heads of it?
Yeah.
It's just for the salaries. We haven't hired the people yet.
All right.
Well, we know who the people are. The committee did that, so.
And we was running a, these people have training in supervising a camp and-
One's a school teacher and has, and the other one is a, a local person who has twelve years of working with, with kids. And they both have the certifications. There's a couple, every, everything we do runs through the Board of Health. So anytime we hire somebody, they have to go through the background check and, and all that kind of stuff, and make sure they have all the qualifications. And the reason we do these people now, or this person, this position, or two positions now, is because they're the ones that have to hire the, the rest of the staff. So that's what we're doing, so. Yeah, they're qualified.
That's what I'm getting at. Again, this program at the Association of Towns really scared me.
Like I said, you want to rec?
No, I don't want it, but I just don't want to get sued for lack of supervision and-
Yeah. We've actually come a long way on, on the supervision stuff over the last few years.
I think also our, when we rebid our insurance, that was looked at. I mean, we can certainly call our, our agent, but that was a, something that we talked about when we-
I spoke-
But like any other insurance policy, Elizabeth, at least my view of an insurance policy, it's just a right to sue the insurance company for money, because if it's ever a big claim, they will try to weasel out, and I am sure that there are many things in an insurance policy with respect-
All I'm saying is that it was brought to the attention of the insurance company. We all seem to be on the same plate here, the same plane. I mean, I don't know what else we can do, instead of not-
Well, you could make sure that you run back, background checks. You can make sure that there's supervision, there's a certification, a group-
Isn't that part of our process that we go through every year?
Yeah, we, we do all that.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, because again, I haven't been that familiar with the way the program operates. I just want to make sure of these things.
Item twelve is a motion approving the proposal for engineering services for, on chap, on tab fourteen.
I think we did eleven.
Yes.
What?
We did, but you wanted to go back to ten.
Okay, we approved the planning and zoning fee schedule, the new one?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so I'll make a motion on twelve.
Any discussion?
Well, let me explain it. The, the contract with Weston and Sampson for the park does not include the ADA-
Building.
Building, structure, whatever. The, and it's because we didn't know about it when we contracted with them. And this is, this is special, or this is additional work that they gave us a proposal for, which was much higher than we could tolerate. So Frank, who's doing this for free, looked around, and Sally, took his mother with him. I'm kidding, Frank. And, you know, they, they talked to different engineers, and they found a guy who was willing to do a lot of this pro bono. He's got some expense. And then Sally went back and talked them down again. I told her, you know, he's, but anyway, this, this is to get the preliminary, preliminary engineering so that Frank can move ahead with the design for the, the structure.
It's a great price, so thank you.
It's just to be able to find a project enough from an architectural point, but also from an engineering standpoint, where it's a calculation and having the time for the structure so that we can kind of continue to get some budgets, a kind of general budget from several contractors, so it'll be more precise.
Thank you.
So this is for a structural engineer?
Yes.
And, and this gets paid for out of the block grant?
Well, this structural, I'm sorry, this structural engineer is also working on the mechanical electrical as well, but structural is part of it. So that's an advantage, it's kind of a complete package.
This is just to develop the budget for the structure.
So, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's so moved. That concludes our business. So just the next items for filing or for discussion, there's, I think we dealt with two already, right, Joe? Building, you?
Yes.
That was the only problem with that? The item one for discussion is update on the beaver dam situation. The situation at the landfill.
Okay, since we last met, Tom Mannix, our consulting engineer, has contacted Kevin Clark, the DEC wildlife biologist, who has issued a permit, and we have until the end of two thousand thirteen to put those pond levelers in. Mr. Mannix has done a rough estimate, and it comes out to about three thousand dollars in materials plus labor. He thinks it's one week's worth of work with, for two to three people, two weeks if we have to do it by hand, because you have to put a trench in the, in the, in the pond.
This is for the levelers?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He, he's got a, I can send it to you, it's a breakdown, but it's, it's basically what's on the DEC website.
And they've, they've issued the permit already, Tom said.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
So, so he, he went ahead and did that. It's, so we can move ahead with that. The, remember, the idea with this is to lower the level of the wetlands, the new wetlands that we have enough so that the beaver get frustrated and move on, or even if they stay there, it'll lower the, the overall water table, which is backing up into the landfill, and it's going to cause us a lot of problems and a lot of money. The, the big thing about this is there's also a local person who's done this before, and Tom is getting a price from him to find out what he would charge to do this. And the, the man has a lot of experience. I talked to him for an hour and a half on the phone, I think, and the different local wetlands around here. So he knows what's going on with this.
The he is who? Mannix or?
No.
Jay Trapp?
No, a different, a guy who traps or does beaver work.
And pond leveling.
Yeah.
Pond leveling guy.
Yeah.
The, the, the big thing to remember with this is they work ninety percent of the time if you do it before the, the beaver population is well-established. Ours is not well-established yet, so we're, we're still in the, and it's spring or slow stream fed, and that's what we've got. So we, basically, we've got six months to get this thing done.
We're going to try this, and then we don't have to kill the beaver, and-
Right, right.
We'll see if it works.
And we have money in the landfill closing, so-
I think it's a good solution. Thank you.
We don't want to kill beaver.
If we don't have to.
No.
You know, if we get our water level down, our ammonia will clear up, and we're, we're good.
Or we could sell it.
We need a volunteer to dress up as the Easter Bunny. If anybody wants to volunteer for that, that's-
Joan, that's part of the county clerk's, is not a real Easter Bunny?
Well, we need a, we need a stunt bunny. I'm not doing it, I gotta-
I mean, there is a real Easter Bunny.
Well, I'm just saying, we need somebody to stand by.
Standby, assistant Easter Bunny.
It's just advertising when we do it, that's all.
Yes, Mr. Bunny's helper, right. So that concludes business.
Tom? I think we have to set a meeting to talk about the union negotiation and in particular retirement. We, we haven't really made a proposal on that, so I think we need an executive session meeting sometime in early March.
We have the first meeting on the eleventh. Is it too, too late on the eleventh?
March eleventh?
Yeah, I think we could do March eleventh. I guess what, we have a union negotiation, Bruce, that day also.
Yeah.
I don't know if we get up to that point.
Do you want to do it before the meeting or after?
I think we're better off doing it before the meeting. What about Friday afternoon, the eighth?
No, I mean, before that meeting, that day, we could come in earlier.
That'd be good.
Well, I don't know if we can come in that earlier, because we have a union negotiation that day that takes us till about-
Till four.
Four. I think that may be rushed. What about the week before? Either Thursday, the seventh, or Friday, the eighth?
I can't do Friday. I could-
I can do seventh.
Thursday. Is this an executive committee meeting?
Yeah, yes.
I can do the seventh.
I can too.
Me too.
What time are you talking about? In the morning?
Whatever you want.
You're talking about daytime, though?
Yeah.
Yeah?
We could do it in daytime.
I can at this point. That'll be, what time you want to do it at?
Four?
I don't know, like, I'm talking about before noon?
Eleven.
Before noon?
Yeah.
Eleven's fine.
Start at ten o'clock? I don't know how long it's going to take. Let's do ten o'clock.
You think it'll be longer?
Ten thirty.
Yeah, I think it's going to take longer.
Ten thirty.
I'm available at ten thirty.
Okay, so, so March seventh at ten thirty A.M.
Executive session. Got it. Motion to adjourn?
Get it.
Oh, Joel, I'm so sorry.
We're going to have Richardson there with us, or?
I think probably not. You know, he may be available by telephone, but I think we, plan was to meet without him. I don't think he'll be available. I could line him up by telephone if we think-
What is this for? So that we can get on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. All, all motion and second for that?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
So moved. Joe? Joe, we do need an Easter Bunny to be a helper, if you wanted to.
Let me, let me, let me consider that. I'm honored. So Little Birdie told me that you guys are interested in about fifty, sixty thousand dollars, I mean eighty thousand dollars from the county for the town IT initiative, new computers, central server, wireless router, mail server, municity software, I don't know if that's going out to RFP or not, for building, planning, zoning, grant to study consolidation of services. I am more than willing to nicely, or not so nicely-
No, nicely.
Nicely.
Nicely. We need your help liaising with the county so that we can, I think the grants become available in the middle of March, and we should start applying then. And if we, I think these are the three we've been talking about, the software for building, planning, zoning, the town IT initiative, and some money for consolidation studies. If there's anything else anyone wants to look at, but I think we need Joel's help in shepherding this through the county. You know, of course, we'll all do our, our part, but we need-
I think the due date is June fifteen, or am I wrong?
About then. It hasn't come out yet. It's supposed to be coming out in mid-March.
And I can talk to Keely Solomon, the county planning commissioner, to try to get an idea of the history over the last five or ten years, how much typically, if anything.
If you could email, you know, John for us, and he'll update us all. Let's start working on this together. It's important. We, you know, there's some money up-
John Clark?
Sorry? Our, our clerk, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, because, yeah, I think it might help if we can find out how much or how little the town and our village has gotten over the last five or ten years.
But this is a new, you know, you're aware that there's a million dollars available for the towns, and-
All you guys are asking for is, you're saying fifty or sixty, maybe eighty?
Uh, but, but, as much as we-
I don't know what we're asking for.
As much as we can get, yeah.
And of course, people watching at home can call the county executive four eight six two thousand and help me do my job to bring home my bacon. That's four eight six two thousand. That is the number for the county executive. He's a good man. So-
This is our money that he took away from us in sales tax, so I would hope that we're going to get a lot back.
Well, Joe, who decides? Is that a legislative decision, who gets it?
No, there's a, there's a board, an independent board.
Legislature, actually, we do get to vote on it, but there's typically, it's like an up or down. It's hard, if not impossible, to make amendments. We do get to vote on the allocation, but it's already been done for us. But I'm, I'm glad to be drawn in.
I was told that there was an independent board that would be reviewing these and, and, and putting them up. Is that-
The county planning board, I believe.
Will you find out too, how, what the mechanism is for getting the money awarded to the towns?
Okay, makes sense.
Yes, I'll do that. I'll be in close communication with all of you.
Yeah, nicely, though.
Nice. I can be nice. And people call the county executive at four eight six two thousand. Just briefly, I want to give the toll-free number for Schumer, Gillibrand, and Chris Gibson, because the federal securitization cuts, you haven't missed the front page today, the picture drawn yesterday, the drawing at times. We're still basically in the worst recession we've been in in about eighty years, and so there's a bunch of people here in this room, some people watching at home. The toll-free number for Schumer, Gillibrand, and Chris Gibson is one eight hundred three two six four nine four one. I'm just asking, we don't, we don't need any more cuts. The county has already cut quite a bit. My understanding is that here on the town level, there's been some cuts. So it's one eight hundred three two six four nine four one. Also, on a state level, the state budget is going to be wrapped up in the next three or four weeks. Everybody I've been working with for the last twenty years in Albany tells me it's going to be done by March twenty-first, March twenty-second. And again, a number of us in the county legislature signed on to a letter I drafted in support in support of a growing together budget, the Better Choice Budget Coalition, it's A Better Choice for NY dot org, closing the corporate tax loopholes, there's never gonna, you know, I, I confess, I wasn't able, able to be here, uh, last week for the, uh, why did the salamander cross the road forum, I apologize, I was not able to be here. I was in the town of Clinton when, uh, Hudsonia did a similar presentation, but just as a sidelight, there's never gonna be enough money for farmland and open space protection, uh, if we don't push for progressive taxation. Not that that is the only solution to, uh, protecting salamanders and other wildlife, but, uh, Chris Christie's New Jersey, they actually have a corporate alternative minimum tax, we don't have that here in New York State. Don't believe me, go to the website, it's A Better Choice for NY dot org, and it's gonna be done, the state budget is gonna be done in the next few weeks, and if you care, because the county executive told me a few weeks ago, a month or two ago, there's a, a reoccurring shortfall, basically built into the county budget of tens of millions of dollars. So I'm afraid there's gonna be more stern and drang and angst and, uh, cuts and layoffs threatened and property or sales tax hikes, uh, so if you care about bringing in some progressive tax revenue, call Schumer, Gillibrand, and, and Chris Gibson, and call, uh, the state legislature and, and the governor. The, the toll-free number for the governor and the state legislators is eight seven seven two five five nine four one seven, that's eight seven seven two five five nine four one seven. Tomorrow is a public hearing in Millbrook on the Farm and Home Center, Route forty-four. Once every twenty years, the county has a solid waste management plan, the public hearing,